April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three to order, and if you would please stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Bass.
Here.
Ingalls.
Here.
King.
Here.
Mayor Philkins.
Here. And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda this evening as it's been presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward with comments this evening that you state your name, and then if you would please write your name and your address for the clerk, it's greatly appreciated. And if you keep your comments to three minutes or less, that's also appreciated.
Hi, my name is Brian Gdowski. I'm Mayor and rest of the council. I spoke to you on the phone.
Yes.
A few days ago. Talking about the Airbnb in two thousand and nine Sunnyside. And we had some more issues this weekend, and the summer hasn't even started yet, but... I guess, you know, my whole thing with this is, first of all, it's illegal. They knew they came in, they knew they came into a place that was owned by our one. They just popped it in there. We had some issues right off of that. The city sent them a cease and desist letter a year ago. Nothing has happened. They've been going great guns, sun sun. The thing is booked out for the summer every weekend, every weekday, just about. It's been probably one of the most popular ones in the whole system. And it's just been a real, there's been, I mean, I can tell you a lot of little issue problems. The real issue with me is it's just kind of ruined our peace of mind in our neighborhood. Now we have to think about this. We have to worry about who these people are, where they came from, what their agenda is, what they're gonna do or not do. We have people that are playing loud music, staying up real late, wandering through the neighborhood. We've had groups there that couldn't even speak English. We didn't know where they were from. We're running quads through the neighborhood. The police were called on that one. The police have been called probably four or five times now. There was illegal fireworks issues. They're burning fire pits all over the yard and different places in the yard that are smoking into the neighbors' houses. Running around the neighborhood late at night. There was one time last year when they had over twenty people staying in that house with a dozen cars parked all over the place, driving on people's yards, letting dogs run in the neighborhood, not following the lease laws and stuff like that. And it's just, it's just kind of been one thing after another. And, and nobody seems to want to take any issue with that and shut these people down. It's illegal. Their, their, the zoning law says it is, and why can't we enforce our zoning laws? Can I come in there and put an adult bookstore next door in my house if I want, or where's all this gonna end? Pretty soon, that whole Sunnyside is gonna be nothing but Airbnb's own thing. And another thing is it's own by a guy out of town, three miles away, that never knows what's going on there. He has some young kid from Miwataka that is the host, and he laughs in her face every time we say something about some issue.
Okay, Mr. Gdowski.
The city can't do nothing about it.
Mr. Gdowski, your three minutes is up.
Okay.
Thank you.
But that's the issue.
Mark Boggerway, I'm representing the Alliance for Economic Success. We've been working to convene a number of local entities to address the housing problems that we have in the city, or everywhere in the state and the country. And I just want to commend you for your representation at the Housing Forum on Friday at Baker College. I thought it was a really useful and good convening of people to look at how these issues can be addressed. And I also just wanted to say that I think that we need more resources to address this for our city and our county and our community. And I wanted to endorse the fact that we have Housing North talking to you a little bit later with Yarrow Brown, a great organization with lots of resources, and they also employ what they call housing readiness coordinators, and we feel like we're moving in that direction. So I just wanted to commend you for your involvement because I think, you know, your constituents are the people of Cadillac, and they all see the housing needs and they see the housing problems, as we just heard. And so the more you're involved with all of this, the more your citizens have a voice at the table as well as how we address the needs. So, and then in maybe fifteen quick seconds, I'm an avid bike rider, as you know, and you got out earlier this year than I've ever seen, sweeping, putting up the bike corridor posts, et cetera. I think it was around Memorial Day last year. So I just want to thank you for that. I think it's really important that we do everything we can to encourage walkers, bikers safely and doing it a lot. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Terry Markwart. I live over on Michigan Avenue, and I'm with Brian and some of my neighbors. This has been a very, very tough situation with this rental house on Sunnyside. I live actually across the street from it. The noise, the disrespect that we've received from these people. We basically had to talk them into mowing their lawns. They purposely skip a section that comes to my road because they thought I was being one of the complainers. I have worked with, I've tried to be nice, congeal. Like I say, there's people from all walks of life, and in today's world, it scares me a little bit that we don't have any clue. And if these people get out of hand, there's no one there to come over and say, hey, guys gotta knock it off. The neighbors are complaining. The police have been called. I've seen cases where I've called the police, they didn't show up. The alley was blocked. That's a one-way through there. It's a narrow road. The snowmobiles a few times flying around the road, I can understand, you know, they're getting ready to hit the lake, have some fun. I'm not here to ruin people's fun. But the fire pits, they had it in the back where there's no water, all pine trees all the way around it. These places are not even getting an inspection from the fire department or anything from the city. You know, so, I mean, when you see rental houses, you see the fire department makes an inspection, and I feel like that's great. But I also, you know, I have two members of my family that own houses on the street, wonderful grandchildren. I don't want my grandchildren playing across this, in this empty lot, when I don't know these strangers. My neighbors, I know them, are a well-grouped area. Everybody seems to look out for one another. This came out of nowhere. When I originally talked to Mike Coy, sent the cease and desist letter, the host said, that's bull. They can't do anything to us. The cities, they were laughing at people. I don't like that. When you tell me I can't do something in this city because of the rules that have been put forth, I respect that. They don't. I don't understand how, I know there's some state laws that aren't altogether, I've been informed, but you as a council, I'm asking you for your help. This is really ruining a beautiful neighborhood. And if it continues more and more and more, I think our police have better things to do to come over to tell people, hey, you can't park here. You're driving over this guy's yard. You're doing this, you know, they're just, there's so much disrespect. And when they leave, there's trash cans, beer cans, papers all over the place. They come have a good time and leave, and I'm not against them having a good time. It's just don't ruin our neighborhood. It's an R1 residential area, and I beg you to keep it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andy Van Alst. I live at two thousand and five Sunnyside Drive. As a wise man once said, the law of unintended consequences. So maybe one of these unintended consequences would be a benefit to the health, safety, or welfare of the citizens of Cadillac. It doesn't look like it. I had problems with neighboring short-term rental, and I called the owner, and it went bad fast, and he said, if you don't like it, call the cops. So I'm like, well, you know, I'll call you first. He says, I live three hours away, and I said, yeah, and I live right next door, you know, so that didn't really work out very good. His guy, his caretaker said, he would, he reached out to me and said he'd be over in the morning to talk and see what we could do. I've never seen or heard from that guy since then. So that doesn't make me feel good. Everyone, at the last, last council meeting, I heard that everyone that got a cease and desist order complied, but that's not true because the people next to me have ordered, they got a cease and desist, and they're not complying. I called the cops twice on this Airbnb, twice for driving across my yard. They drove across my yard. A year ago, I didn't do anything. They blocked the alley. I didn't do anything. They drove across my yard yesterday. I called the cops, right? And then they blocked the alley with some other vehicles, and I called the cops on them too, but they get a warning, right? And then I moved. This is the first time I've complained about this to anyone but my neighbors and anybody else, friends that will listen. They're not really a neighbor if they drive on your property. They have fires in bad spots. One of the other neighbors was complaining about the fire they had just the other night coming in and had to turn on the lights to just say, knock it off, loud music. They're told to stay off my property, but they're running around my front yard picking up sticks while I have family and friends over, and what do I do? Hey, cops, get over here, you know? And then there's a guy that rents during the week. He's there now. I just saw him pull in. And there's an upstairs window that looks right into my kitchen and bathroom and bedroom window, so I've, you know, you gotta watch. There, you're always under surveillance by somebody who's hanging their head out the window, smoking, which they probably can't smoke either. But I feel like there's a squeeze play going on over on Sunnyside Drive. There are several Airbnbs that are in there that are illegal, and I've talked to some of the people, and I've talked to people from the city, and I'm not getting the same story. So that bothers me. There's stealing our peaceful enjoyment of our property and selling it for what I don't know. And people go, well, it brings tourist money to the area. Well, it's great, you know, but they're not going to the doctor, they're not going to the lawyer, they're not, they're not going to the dentist, they're not going to the people we go to buy cars and, and stuff like that. When I stayed at an Airbnb out of town in an approved area, we get twenty-four people in the house, we bring our own food, we're not spending it anywhere. We don't have to go anywhere. And the other people have talked about it not being inspected. Well, you can't really do that because then, you know, you're telling on yourself.
Okay, Andy, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, seeing.
My name is John Dykstrom, President of Freedom Festival this year. I just want to thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and thank you for the support that this community has poured out for the new board. I want to tell you that, gosh, I'm an old man now, and I've moved like thirty times in my life. I feel like I was an army brat for years. My wife and I landed in this community in 2020, and it's been, we've been blessed ever since. And each person we come in contact with has been very kind and humble to help us out, and then each person that I've met, either through the community, different businesses, different organizations, have been nothing but happy and, and humble to come forth and lend a helping hand, whether it's in volunteering or sponsorships or ideas or introducing me to new people and, and different ways of doing things. So I just wanted to thank you guys for the considerations before the committee this evening and wish you continued support for what you guys do. I know you don't have easy jobs here, and I just bless each one of you for taking time to hear me tonight.
Okay, now seeing no one, we'll close public comment and move forward with the approval of the consent agenda, which tonight includes the minutes from our work session that was held on April third, two thousand and twenty-three, along with the minutes from our regular meeting on April third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingalls.
Yes.
King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. This evening, we have a few public hearings before you. The first two are related in regard to our capital improvements plan and our annual budget. And I'm going to introduce our Finance Director, Owen Roberts, to provide essentially the backdrop for both of those. But before he talks, I just wanted to mention how, you know, this evening is the culmination of a lot of work behind the scenes by staff, by City Council, the workshops that we did collaboratively together to get us to this point as a part of the overall process. As I know, our Finance Director will illuminate everybody on. You know, we're not approving anything until the third Monday in May. And then even at that point, this is a, you know, a living and breathing document, as you have later this evening, even a budget amendment. You know, things can, can change accordingly. But again, it's wonderful to have the support from the legislative body and the great staff to put everything together. And Owen?
Yep.
Take it from there.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Carrie. So we are going to, just a point of clarification, we'll ask for approval of this document. Doesn't appropriate any funds. We do that typically each year. And then for the budget one, that won't be acted on until May fifteenth. So we're gonna start tonight with the capital improvement program, and this covers the fiscal years from 2024, which starts in July until 2029. So that's a six-year plan. And just to reiterate what the purpose of this is, really, it's a planning document. Project coordination, for example, redoing utilities when they're under a road that's gonna be torn up. Last thing we want to do is tear up a good road to replace old utilities, so this document helps us coordinate for that. It's another chance for us to get some public input and communication. We had a work session on this plan back in March, and it's been on our website and available in our office since then to, to provide input or comments on. So it's another opportunity for that to happen. Is this required? Not necessarily by any city charter or document. The Planning Act does have some requirements for some capital planning for public structures and improvements. We've expanded on that and done this for a number of years where we do it as a whole capital expenditure document that's updated then each and every year. We define a capital asset, once again, for the, for the sake of the public, as an asset or a project that costs in excess of seventy-five hundred dollars with a useful life of more than one year. So basically, it's anything that you would capitalize or depreciate that's gonna last more than a year. Projects are identified in a number of different ways. Departmental requests as they analyze the needs of their department. City council priorities as we hear about those through the year. Community needs and citizen input, once again, as we listen to that and hear that throughout the year. And then grants, as they become available. If something pops up and we have the opportunity to apply for something and can sort of customize a project that would fit within the parameters of that grant, then that can have something pop either into the plan or kind of on a, an as-needed basis as well. The current version of the plan contains one hundred and forty-five projects, so it's a pretty lengthy document. There, in the document, there's one page for each project, so we try to give a little bit of extra details. And so that's, again, available on the website if anybody would want to look further into there. This chart just simply summarizes those into some broader categories to give you an idea of what we're planning for with the document. So you can see one hundred and forty-five projects to the tune of twenty-nine million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Some of these are more conceptual in nature, some are more imminent and realistic in nature, and so this, this document kind of combines all of those. In the, just to point out, in the streets and sidewalks category of six point, almost three million dollars, there are five and a half miles of, of streets in there that we're gonna try and, try and do some rehabilitation on. So trying to address some of those bad sections within the city. Specific to street infrastructure and the schedule and the major streets, we are, we have awarded, and we do have a contract for repaving project, and that's on major and local streets. There's fifteen-ish different sections of city roads that don't need to be completely dug up and redone, and so we worked with the engineer on identifying some of those sections that we could do. Again, contracts have been awarded for that, and as a matter of fact, Carmel Street was supposed to start today, but obviously Mother Nature did not cooperate. Carmel Street, I think, as, as Chris wrote, is one of the worst in the city. We get a lot of complaints about that one. We're hoping to get that kicked off today. That didn't quite happen, but, again, because of the timing, it's in this document, but some of those will be started this year. North Boulevard, that's really by Kenwood Park from Rose, which is right there at the entrance to the park, all the way out to one fifteen. Gonna try and do the same thing with that. That will be sort of a Band-Aid approach till we have to do the really, really big project there, which will be a lot more than one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I can, I can assure you. So we're gonna try and get some sections of Leeson Avenue done in year one, which is the fiscal year that starts after July one. And again, Carmel Street was, was on this schedule because we didn't know the timing of when the contractor would get there to do it, but it looks like some of these may be done before the end of the current fiscal year. On the local street side, same thing with some sections of, of just repaving or milling and overlay, crushing shape, some approach like that. That's much less invasive than, than a total reconstruct, and so there, there are a lot less costs, and you can do smaller sections, and so that's what that is doing on some local streets. The significant project in the local streets is Lester Street. That's in front of Franklin Elementary School, and that's been a pretty bad street for a number of years as well, so we're hoping to get that one completely rebuilt starting right after the, the school year. That one's in poor enough condition that it needs to be totally rebuilt. Some additional projects, fourteen of them at a cost of three point seven million dollars in then the subsequent years of the, of the plan. From a utilities infrastructure standpoint, I think this is important to keep in mind as you hear about systems that have fallen way, way behind in infrastructure maintenance, and that's something that we really want to work hard to avoid, and so we try to plan those out. It's about fourteen of those projects in the six-year plan to the tune of about three point five million dollars. Part of that is under the street construction projects that we have. There's ten of those, about one point four million. Trying to do those again in coordination with the street projects. And then there are some sewer lining projects in two, years two, three, and four, five hundred thousand dollars per year. The justification for those, you don't have to dig up the street. So these may be sections where the street has some life in it, but it's an older sewer line that, that we can do some lining of it to extend the life of it then for quite some time. As part of the, you know, I think important to note that these infrastructure projects are important to identify as you talk about, you know, the, the, the annual rate setting process and all the details and calculations that, and forethought that really needs to flow into there. There may need to be, as we get later into the, the program, years three and four, not guaranteeing that there won't be some, some need for some debt financing. And again, a lot of this will be discussed on May first. We are hoping to have the, the rate consultant here tonight, but he was not unfortunately available for tonight. So he will be here in person to do a presentation on May one. A big part of the program for the year is the purchase of some public safety vehicles. The, the biggest expense comes from the fire department, and that being the aerial ladder truck. If you drive by it from the street, it looks like a really, really nice new truck. It's a nineteen ninety-five, so that's almost thirty years old. The life of those things is typically fifteen to twenty-five years, and they are very, very expensive, obviously, to, to replace. And then our other mainline engine out in year six, that one will need to be replaced as well. Each of the years has a, a police vehicle in it to the tune of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars over the life of the, of the plan. One thing we're gonna need to do here coming up is to talk about how to, to finance and fund the ladder truck based on the lead time to build and deliver those. We need to get kind of the ball rolling today even to be able to have it roll into our, our shop three years from now. So you may need, you may hear some of that coming up. Just some other quick highlights. We mentioned the Cadillac Community Center. We were approached by the, the arts groups and seniors that there are some, some places in the facility that are getting a little bit rundown, and so we hope to do some work on there. That will need to be funded by the general fund, and that's a part of the twenty-four budget. And then we do replace computers every year, just as a point of reference, so that we don't have to, to buy, you know, seventy computers all in the same, same year. One thing that's a little bit newer this year, we tried to throw some of the more conceptual or forward-thinking projects in here, recreation-type infrastructure projects. The, the market screens are obviously a little bit more specific, as we'll have a public hearing in a few minutes on, on applying for a pretty significant grant to, to help with that project. So we're hopeful that that could come to fruition. But we threw some other ones in there as well this year that, that we've talked about in the past, but they didn't show up in here, and so, you know, we wanted to make sure we, we started talking about those now so that, you know, in the future, if they come up with, with grant or other outside funding opportunities. Now, we have had a chance to have some, some public discussion around these projects. So some neighborhood parks, updates to the city dock and grounds, and I know there was some private maintenance done on the, the dock even, I think, this weekend, and so it really is in the, in the state. We need to start taking a look at how to do some major renovation to the, the city dock. Diggins Hill improvements, I think we have quite an opportunity up there on the hill to, to do some pretty significant things for the community in terms of recreational opportunities, just a variety of things that could be available up there. The tennis courts are in a pretty rough shape at this point, and so would need to look at kind of redoing some of that. Changing the use a little bit, maybe even to, to expand the availability of pickleball in the area. Disc golf, you know, with the pads and, and some forestry there to help out with that, with that sport as well. Kind of the same thought with Kenwood Park. It's sort of our other area where we have some significant land that we could do some of these things. Obviously, at these costs, these projects would need some pretty, pretty hefty outside funding, but there are from time to time some of those available. So as we start to talk about some of those, we will have seen them before. And then the Mitchell Street Corridor, there's been a lot of discussion beginning on, on what that will look like for the future. So that will require partnerships with MDOT, who owns the road, the DDA, as well as some other outside funding. That would be a fairly significant project, obviously. So just to wrap it up for this one, again, not required by charter ordinance, but something we've done for a lot of years to help with the, the overall annual planning process. We are requesting approval tonight for the program. Again, that doesn't, doesn't necessarily at all fund any projects or appropriate the funds. Just kind of says that we're, we're sort of in agreement in concept that the things in here are, have been well thought out and are worthwhile projects and purchases, and that, that's it. So I'm gonna go ahead and sit down, and that way, if there's any other public comments or questions, then I can answer from here. Be back in a minute.
Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public hearing in regards to the capital improvement program. Okay, seeing no one, we'll... Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment and open up for discussion or questions from the council.
Some exciting things in the offing in the, on the vision board, so to speak, which the improvement plan, program is, I think. Anybody? I'll make a motion.
One minute.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say to follow up on what councilperson Schippers said, one of the most important parts of our capital improvement plan is making sure we're doing what the citizens want on these projects. So again, invite everybody, go to our website. Owen's done a great job with the descriptions of the projects. Look at them, give us feedback. We only know we're doing a good job for you if you guys are vocal with us. If everybody's quiet, it's tough for us to do something after the fact, so.
Right, right. Yeah, and I will say that I did get a phone call today. People were really excited to see all this big equipment at the sheriff's department. They thought that something was happening at the sheriff's department, so I'm like, no. Carmel Street.
That's Carmel Street.
Well, if you're going to move the city dock, I would hope that you get out to the public and explain to them what's going on. I'm getting a lot of pushback, people that don't want it and don't think we need it, so.
I don't think we're talking about moving the dock.
$700,000?
Just fixing the docks.
Fixing the dock.
Fixing the docks where they are. Yeah.
Well, then I'll just be quiet. That's a good way to shut me out.
If I may, maybe.
It's just fixing the existing dock.
So there's, there's no project as of today. It's a placeholder project. We know that we do need to make some improvements to what we have currently. We know that in the original place planning document, there was a call for creating a whole new public docking space or enlarging what we currently have. But as of right now, other than knowing that we need to maintain what we have, there is no outside funding source or plan yet put together to create additional spaces, to put in the fishing pier or the, yeah, the pier where people could go and, you know, watch a sunset from. It may come about, I mean, we are obviously looking very strongly at what comes out of Lansing in terms of opportunities to apply for grants, impending what comes out, when it comes out, and if anything could fit in there, well, you know, we'll try to put a project together, but we'll certainly bring it, obviously, to city council, so, and the public. Here's what we're looking at, you know, yea or nay or somewhere in between, so.
That whole concept came out of the public chariots that we had with MSU extension, and so those were just some ideas that the public liked, but, and that also included a picnic deck right behind the pavilion, but that's not what we're talking about in the capital.
Very good.
So then, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 through 2029 capital improvement program as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Schippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor. My introduction about 10 minutes ago is the same as before. Owen?
Here.
All right, you want to switch that for me to the next one?
Which one is it? This one? No.
Is it open? The budget?
Yep. Well, maybe I don't have it open. I just hit the first one.
To go back to the.
Right there, here?
Yep. And just open the.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
There you go.
All right, now we're ready. So this public hearing is the annual required public hearing for the budget. In order to pass a General Appropriations Act in May, we have to hold this in April. So basically, just to reiterate the steps required to pass a budget, the budget is due to city council on or before the first day of April in each year, and so we deliver that on March 31st. The public hearing is required to be sometime in the second half of the month of April, according to the city charter, so that's what we're doing here tonight. And then the budget adoption is not before the 10th of May nor later than the last day in May each year. So that will be scheduled for May 15th, and that budget ordinance will be introduced on May 1st. So all of the next couple of meetings, we have opportunities where the budget process at least will be in front of you, and that would be in addition to the public work session that we held at our last council meeting on the 3rd. The budget ordinance does grant authority to amend the budget when necessary by resolution, and so we'll have an example of that later in this meeting as we look to do that, as we approach the end of another fiscal year here in a couple of months. Overall, the proposed 2024 budget anticipates revenues of $22,236,800 and appropriate spending of $24,842,700. What that then equates to is a pretty big number in the red. I want to highlight it, and I also want to assure you that it is absolutely something that we've talked about, that we've planned for, and it is for capital and one-time purchases. This is not an indication at all, as we'll reiterate even in the general fund, that our budget is structurally imbalanced, where every year we're spending more on year-over-year expenses than we're bringing in. That is not the case. This is a strategic and planned use of capital dollars for one-time capital projects, as highlighted by the general fund, trying to use about $256,000 to help with some capital purchases, and primarily then, street and sidewalk infrastructure in the major street fund, local street fund, and downtown infrastructure project fund. That is where the vast majority of that additional, those reserves will be used. And again, those are currently on hand and available for this type of purpose. That's not money that's being spent on recurring expenditures. It's for one-time use. The budget accomplishes, I think, several important priorities. Number one is the protection of those reserves, though we're using some of the excess reserves. We will still be well in excess of our policy minimum fund balance that we have on hand, and I think that's an important note as well. So we've taken some of that additional funds and invested it strategically in these important street and infrastructure projects while still having enough to meet what our policy minimum would say. Right now, that policy says 15% of annual general fund expenditures. We're going to provide a new policy document that increases that slightly to 17%, but we'd still be well in excess. We're still around the 40% range, so still looking very healthy in that regard. It does invest pretty heavily in that infrastructure, continues to invest in our people, about 74 full-time employees and a number of part-time employees and seasonal employees across all of our departments, and about $8.3 million in spending on personnel. In addition, public safety, I think, is always an important community investment, about $4.3 million for that. And our water and sewer fund, as we try to ensure clean provision of water and efficient and effective cleanup of the wastewater at the plant, about $5.1 million in expenditures to do that. About 55% of our general fund revenue comes from property taxes, so it's pretty important each year when we start to get in our estimates of where our property, overall property taxable value will fall. This chart presents about a 15-year history of what's happened with our taxable value since a prior peak in 2009. We went through some pretty lean years there, as you can see, before starting to recover then, fortunately, in these last few years, as our taxable values have reflected what we've seen in the market with increasing property values. However, one of the challenges with that has been what's happened with our operating millage then. So you can see here for the last seven years what's happened with our operating millage. The Headley Amendment, obviously, is an amendment in our state constitution that restricts growth in tax revenues, and so when those sort of exceed the rate of inflation, then you have to roll back or reduce your operating millage to a level where it keeps it equal with that number. And so four out of the last six years, we've seen a reduction of our millage and lost nearly half a mil total for that. When you apply our millage rate with our taxable value, here's the actual revenue that we'll see from there. So our total levy between operating and our police and fire millage is just south of $4.6 million, and portions of that are captured by our various tax increment financing authorities, the DDA, the LFA, the Brownfield. Those are for specific areas, and those funds just need to be invested in those specific districts. Bottom line, our millage rate is at 13.4992, and that is actually the same as it was last year. Police and fire millage at 2.6 mils, no change, and the DDA continues to be at 1.8501 mils. Going to highlight our general fund and our water and sewer fund, which are two most significant funds in our entity. Revenue for the general fund this year is up to $8.4 million. Again, property taxes provide 55% of that, at about $4,663,500, which is a little bit bigger than that number, but that's because this number includes the administration fee that we charge of 1%, late fees, some pilot charges, and the marijuana tax that we began getting last year. State shared revenue is about $1.3 million in the general fund. Solid waste collection, these are the fees that come on the water bills for Republic Services and Miss Green as our recycling contractor, and fairly good news on that is these are only expected to change by about 20 cents per month, which equates to about $2.40 per year. That's based on the inflationary indexes that are built into the contracts. The thing that really kept the increase down on that was diesel fuel went down quite a bit from where it was one year ago, so the index on that helped sort of offset the inflation on the other side of the equation. And we continue to have some public safety contracts with Northlight MMR, with CAPS for a school resource officer, and with Clam Lake Township for fire protection. On the expenditure side, for the general fund of about $8.7 million, and again, we are planning to use some reserves, utilizing reserves of $256,300, but if you look down two bullets, you'll see capital purchases are $439,500. So our operating revenues are providing some level of capital investment, and we're increasing that a little bit, or subsidizing that a little bit with some use of reserves to make those purchases, both here at the complex, some police equipment and vehicle, some fire equipment and some parks investments. This year, the lake treatment transfer to cover the treatment costs are up from $30,000 to $50,000. The only thing we'll spend is what our actual treatment costs and costs of the consultant come in at, so they could be a little less, could be a little bit more, depending on what they find in their initial lake surveys here that will be coming up. And then the general fund has assumed 100% of the costs of downtown parking lot maintenance, so that increased the budget in the general fund for that as well for the year. In the water and sewer fund, budgeted revenue is up about 4.6% from current projected year-end revenue. We have budgeted in this fund for a surplus, where revenues will exceed expenses by about $156,500. This amount will be reinvested right back into the system to help with capital expenditures. However, we do plan, it's not sufficient enough to cover both debt service and the level of capital that we're proposing, so we will use up about $230,000 in cash on hand to fully fund the capital costs. Our budgeted expenses are up about 6%. Interest expense and depreciation, again, have continued to go up as we put the new well field online. And just as a point of reference, there's 22 full-time employees that are paid for plus seasonals from the water and sewer fund. This is the chart we put in here each year. Again, we watch this study closely, just to reiterate that our rates are in a good place relative to other systems locally. These are systems that are in the northern lower and eastern upper peninsulas. So we were the sixth lowest of 47 responding water systems, and Cadillac is the 11th lowest of 48 responding sewer systems. So the typical in the study, and this is the outside Gosling Zubek Engineering Services study, the typical combined water and sewer bill was 73, 75 per month, while at the time, Cadillacs was about 44, 72 per month, or about 40% below typical. If we were to apply just our last couple of years of changes in rates to that study and not change anyone else's, we would be still ninth lowest for water and 18th lowest for sewer, so still well in the bottom percentiles of those studies. Here's what we've done for the last 15 years for our utility rates. So they kind of track some major projects, really. Back in 2011 and '12 is when we brought the Crosby Road well field live, so there were some rate changes there, and then four out of the next six years were at a zero, and then we began to gear up for our current well field project. On there, you can see that the average, the 15-year average for both water and sewer, water was 3.5%, sewer was 2.8%. So though they spiked and dipped a little bit here and there, the average was right around what you'd expect as a kind of an inflationary adjustment. We did, we're in the final stages of the comprehensive rate study that municipal analytics is completing for us. That did really affirm the need to continue to look at rates so that we can make incremental adjustments to be able to continue to invest in the system and not be at the place where we have to take huge swings just to Band-Aid the system, trying to proactively do maintenance each and every year, and really rates and that revenue is our only source to do that. So the proposed change this year will be 5% for the average water and sewer customer. That would be an impact of about $2.64 a month or $31.68 annually. So that's not, obviously, without some impact, but I think for $2.64 a month, the investment that that protects, that we're able to continue to make for investment right back into the system, is an important thing to consider as we move forward with that proposal. And again, on May 1st, the consultant will be here, both to make a presentation and to be available as part of a Q and A. So we welcome any questions you may have beforehand that he could prepare answers for, or he'll be available, as will we, to answer those at that time. That really concludes what I wanted to summarize for you as part of the public hearing. Again, we'll be very available for questions, have a lot of information available that's not necessarily a part of the core presentation. Just to reiterate, the public process of passing a budget here in the city, we did have the goals and capital work session on March 20th. We had a work session open to the public on April 3rd. Tonight, we're at our charter-required public hearing. We will introduce the general appropriations ordinance on May 1, two weeks from tonight, and then we will hold another public hearing, though probably not an official presentation like this, but another chance to get public input prior to then the vote on adopting a General Appropriations Act on May 15th. For the last couple of weeks, and in the meantime, up through the approval process and moving forward, the budget will be available for public review input, both in the printed copies, if anyone is interested, or it can be found on. both in the printed copies, if anyone is interested, or it can be found online at the URL on your screen. And really, that's it. There's my contact information. If anybody is watching the video later or in here wants to write it down and and call me or email me, always happy to answer questions. And again, I'll take a seat and be available from my from my desk if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment as it relates to this public hearing on the 2023-2024 annual operating budget. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment, and there is no further action required from us on this topic this evening. So I think that takes us over to...
One more public hearing?
Okay.
It's just not, it's not on your blue. I apologize. It is on the agenda.
Oh, right. Okay.
Community Development Block Grant.
Yes.
So...
Yeah, that's a... Oops.
Mayor and members of the City Council, the final public hearing is with regard to our application for Community Development Block Grant funding for the market at Cadillac Commons. And I'll be I'll be brief. In short, this is to provide the necessary funding, should we be successful in getting this grant, for the replacement of the essentially completely non-functional windscreen system that was originally installed as a part of the market itself. That system is out of warranty, and it's completely on the city to to replace the system with something that will frankly be a lot more sturdy with the torrential weather that we do receive here. The original grant program we were we were sort of eyeing or focusing was the Spark Grant Program. I believe it's through the Department of Natural Resources. That grant program is currently unavailable. There happens to be a a Public Spaces Placemaking Grant Initiative program that is available that is also through the state of Michigan. However, it is a federal funding source, that being community development block grants. That grant program does require a minimum investment of $750,000, and that does not include the same local match piece that we were going to be looking at for the Spark Program of $100,000. That would bring it up to $850,000. And in looking at the potential cost of the door system, coupled with the gap that we would have, the largest issue complaint that we receive is we need bathrooms on this side of of Lake Street. That being the east side of Lake Street to service the market, to service the plaza, to service anybody that's out recreating in the city park. And so to make that gap go away, as well as to add a couple of other amenities, especially green technology that the state has said would help us in terms of grant scoring. What's before you this evening for consideration is approval of a resolution that would allow us to make our application to the state of Michigan for this grant program. Our local match piece is the same as what we've been planning for, but this would be not just for the overhead door system, but also for bathrooms, actual regular flushing bathrooms, not not, you know, porta, yeah, porta porta potties or porta johns. And so if there's any questions, I'm certainly able to try to address them. We also have Owen here, our finance director, Connie, our engineer, who's working with with the application itself. And this is a necessary part of of that process, which would be to open it up for any public input, as well as then, of course, the consideration of support from the City Council.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for a public comment related to the Community Development Block Grant. Please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk.
Okay, it's Rose Fowler. And I was just watching the 6 o'clock news, and about 6:20, I saw Mr. Petya came on, mentioned the meeting was tonight, so I ran over as quickly as I could. I was just driving past the market at Cadillac Commons about a month ago. I looked over there and said, that would be the perfect place for an ice rink. I know, we had the little one over by the fountain and the fireplace. The plastic pad was put out. It's, it was really ineffective, nobody's using it, but it was a great idea, I thought, to have an outdoor rink in Cadillac. I have heard concerns that it might affect business at the Wex, but in reality, an outdoor ice rink is not too difficult to maintain, especially with that perfectly level surface that is in that building. But with the, you know, extremely cold temperatures, and they don't get used daily, so I don't really think it would cut into business too hard for the Wex, and I think most of their revenue comes from hockey. So, yes, I got very excited when I saw this, and I ran right over, because I just drove past there and said, we should have an ice rink there. It would be so nice to have one downtown. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Should I put my phone number on here also?
Just your address.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to discussion, discussion of the council.
That wasn't me.
It wasn't me.
It was that side of the room.
My stomach just went... Yeah. She scared me.
At least it wasn't like when the justice flushed, right? Oh, my gosh, sorry. Okay, so let's see, this motion would be...
It would be a motion of support to apply for the CDBG grant.
Do we get to ask questions?
Yes.
Of course.
I have some questions.
Yeah.
Part of the upgrade is going to be the heating in it that there's been complaints about, is that true?
That is, that is not true. We did upgrade the heat, council member. Was it last year or the year before?
Year before.
Yeah, we doubled it. We actually doubled the heat.
Is there any way, is there any thoughts of adding insulation as part of the plan?
I think that is a part of the the windscreen solution, that being the the doors pending what we're able to get and afford. It might have insulated glass even, and so I think it'll create a much more temperate spot.
Yeah, the window will be whistling through all those little holes.
I mean, there won't, it won't be screens anymore. It'll be solid doors, so.
Is there anything involving building codes, because they're originally billed as an open-air structure?
And it would still be open air once the doors are open. So it would, similar to the screens.
Technically, it still fits there then, right?
I hope so.
Me too. That's not a yes or no answer. Come on, big guy. Okay. Is engineering costs included in the in the in the fund, or is that going to be paid by the city, or what we're putting in for, engineering costs?
So engineering fees, ultimately, everything council member gets paid through by the city.
Right.
Those...
And that part of the $750,000, are we going to be?
So that's a good question. I don't know, Connie or Owen, if you can address that directly, how all that would work.
Typically, design costs are paid for outside of the...
Outside of the grant?
Maybe some...
You have any idea how much the engineering costs are for this yet?
I think the only, the the engineer would be, it would probably be more of an architect fee to design the bathrooms.
Okay.
So, you know, it depends on how much those costs. I think they're typically probably like a 10%-ish of of just that portion of the project.
Yeah. Well, I want to be, I want to be careful with the funding, because the the original market went way over. And Steve, you always talk about fiscal responsibility, and that the parking lot was estimated, bike parking lot, what, was estimated in $350,000? And somebody told me it came in at 750. Owen, you got any comment on that?
Which parking lot?
Bike parking lot.
The trailhead?
The trailhead?
Yeah.
It was not 750. I don't have the number right in front of me, but I think it was...
It was over, though, right?
The quotes came in much higher than the original quotes, just because of the economy.
Okay.
But that's why we worked together to change what was actually put there, to get the cost back in line.
The council streamlined that whole project.
No estimates, no competitive bidding yet, or anything?
No, this is just the very first step.
Just applied for the grant.
Okay, all right.
Where would, would the bathrooms be on the side with the market or on the park side? Market?
Be on the market side, council member. Probably, possibly on the south side, either near the current mechanical space. It might even be in place of the mechanical space. It's possible that those attributes can get relocated into the bathroom facility. The idea will be to minimize the amount of space that we're taking up as best as possible to still try to focus on available parking.
How much, you don't have any idea yet, how much will be torn up for the bathroom or parking spots, or?
No, I mean, it's it's not designed yet, yeah.
There's an island there at the end on the kind of the southeast corner. And so it would, the 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 initial thought was to use that same footprint, and then maybe one space on that side, and maybe one space to the west, I guess. So it would be pretty, pretty minimal. They wouldn't be big.
We know where all the hookups are.
Three stalls kind of things.
Where all the hookups are.
There's water right there, and we would just need to to look at where the closest connection to the sewer is.
But I think it's important that City Council doesn't, in a sense, walk out tonight thinking that this is, you know, exactly where everything's going to go.
First step.
Yeah. The first step tonight is to try to secure the outside funding, to see if any of this is even palatable. And I think that it's important to to keep in the back of your minds, in a sense, that the original program we were looking at was very limiting, but yet the the matching piece was going to still be the same. Versus this opportunity, the program is a lot bigger in scope, because it's going to include bathroom facilities that are very expensive to build, yet again, the matching piece is the same as what it was going to be without even having bathrooms as part of it. And so, you know, if we can, if we could actually get this, it would be quite a, quite a a nice achievement, so.
Make sure we get it done right.
Of course.
And on budget. Thank you.
So, anybody else? Okay, I think I have, make a motion to support applying for the Community Development Block Grant funding for the market at Cadillac Commons.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. And Kerry, that takes us to quite a few communications for this evening.
Yes, we have quite a few. We have a request from the Friends of the Cadillac Bexford Public Library to approve a banner display from April 24th to May 1st for the National Library Week.
I'll make that motion to approve the display of a banner from April 24th to May 1st, 2023, for National Library Week.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Excuse me, motion carries.
Next, we have a a request from the Cadillac Area Visitor Bureau and the Cadillac Area Chamber of Commerce to approve a display of a banner from May 8th to the 15th for Shop, Dine, Explore for Mitchell Street.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from May 8th to the 15th, 2023, for Shop, Dine, Explore Mitchell Street.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next is a request from the Cadillac Area Symphony Orchestra to display a banner from May 1st to the 8th for the Cadillac Area Symphony Orchestra Concert.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from May 1st to the 8th, 2023, for the Cadillac Area Symphony Orchestra Concert.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next, we have a motion to approve the display of a banner, I'm sorry, next we have a request to approve a display of a banner for the Mayor's Youth Council from April 18th to the 24th for Earth Day event. And also, we have a request to close Cass Street between Lake and the entrance to the Commons parking lot from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM on April 23rd for the Earth Day event.
I'd make a motion to approve the display of a banner from April 8th to the 24th, 2023, for Earth Day event.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
I can, yes.
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
I'd make another motion to approve the closure of Cass Street between Lake Street and entrance to Commons parking lot from 12:00 to 5:00 PM on April 23rd, 2023, for Earth Day event.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Next, we have a request to approve a closure for the Rotary Stride, for Stride Memorial 5K, to, I'm sorry, to close Sunset Lane between Leeson Street and Selma Street from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on May 29th for the Stride, for Stride 5K.
I'd make a motion to approve the closure of Sunset Lane between Leeson Street and Selma Street from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM on May 29th, 2023 through 23 for Cadillac Rotary Stride for Stride 5K.
Support.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Last, we have Freedom Festival. They are requesting to approve the following closures. Mitchell Street between Cass and Pine on July 8th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Lake Street between Harris and Cass Street from 8, sorry, from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on July 7th, and from 8:00 AM to 11:30 PM on July 8th. Mason Street between Mitchell Street and the fire station on July 8th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Okay, I'll make a motion, can I, that all goes in one? I'll make a motion to approve the following closures. Mitchell Street between Cass Street and Pine Street on July 8th from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Lake Street between Harris Street and Cass Street from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM on July 7th, and from 8:00 AM to 11:30 PM on July 8th. And Mason Street between Mitchell Street and the fire station on July 8th from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
We also need a, they also are requesting to approve a parade for the kids' parade to be held on July 6th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And also, no, that's it, that's, that parade is going to be on Lake Street.
I'll make a motion to approve the kids' parade to be held on July 6th, 2023, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM on Lake Street.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Last is another parade, and it's for the Fourth of July Freedom Festival, to be held on July 4th from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM, and that's going to be held on Mitchell Street.
I would make a motion to approve Fourth of July Freedom Festival Parade to be held on July 4th, 2022, from 11:30 AM to 2:30 PM on Mitchell Street.
23, 2023.
What'd I say?
22.
Where'd that come from? On 2023. Excuse me.
It always came out of my gut a little bit.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. We're at the point in the agenda where we're at the City Managers' Report. There are a few items this evening. The first one is an update from the Executive Director of Housing North, Yaro Brown. Yaro, I would like to thank you for all of your patience this evening, and I want to, as a part of my introduction, just make a couple of general comments. You know, as City Council has been going through the this process, and frankly, the process goes on throughout the year regarding budgeting and looking at programs and policies and and where things are at and where we want to go, you know, one of the, one of the primary core reasons why we do all of these things, especially as we were talking just about the market, is about, you know, how to continue to create value in our community, not just sustain value, but create value. And you can define value in many different ways. One way is economic value, creating a place that people want to visit, a place that people want to invest in, work in, live in. It's all part of, you know, the recipe for continuing to be able to move your community forward. Well, one of the, one of the core foundations to that is housing and having... Well, one of the, one of the core foundations to that is housing and having the ability for people to, to, to find a place to live. Whether you're talking about rental housing or, or, or not, um, you have to have it and you have to have enough of it and at different, different levels. So not everybody, you know, might be able to afford or even may want to be able to live, you know, on the lake. Some people might want apartment style or multifamily living and everything in between. And so, you know, uh, we have asked Yaro Brown, the executive director from Housing North, which is a part of our regional planning authority, Networks Northwest, to come in tonight and give a sort of a higher level overview about the importance of housing and frankly, what some of the, the biggest changes coming out of Lansing are that will help provide municipalities such as Cadillac with the ability of trying to, to, to create more housing opportunities here in the community. And so, Ms. Brown, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, looks like we have your, your PowerPoint here, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for having me and, and listening for 10 minutes. I'll try to watch the clock and not go. I also tend to, uh, talk fast, so if you need me to slow down or go over anything, let me know.
And I'll forward this out to them as well.
Okay, yeah, I was going to say that this has links and a lot of the reason I use a visual is just so later on you can look back at it and go to our website. Um, so we are a regional nonprofit. We were born out of Networks Northwest, but we are actually our own independent 501(c)(3) and we're celebrating our five-year anniversary this year. Um, I started in, um, May of 2020 and we focus on the 10 counties in Northwest Michigan, similar to Networks Northwest. Um, but we also do, so we do work both regionally as well as locally in each of our communities. We have 187 units of government in that 10-county region. Um, and we focus on three areas or three buckets, we call, uh, legs of our stool perhaps, uh, communications and awareness, advocacy and policy work and capacity and resources all around housing. And we were formed because in this region, as you know, there is a housing issue. Um, and it was something that's been talked about for years and they really realized that they wanted one organization to focus solely on housing. Uh, most of our work, we do not place people in housing and we do not build the housing, which can be confusing. Uh, but what we do do is try to work it with our communities to remove barriers and bring in more resources and tools to our community all around housing. Uh, this is what I want to focus on today. I could probably talk about 10 different topics, uh, but I'm going to talk about the new tools that just came out, uh, a little bit about who we are and what we do, um, and then our housing ready program and, and why, uh, we're looking to bring this program to Wexford and Mesaki Counties. So just, uh, to set the stage for, for the numbers, I always like to start here. We did get a target market analysis and this is a little bit out of date, but this is the numbers we have right now, uh, that showed that we needed about 15,000 units in our 10-county region from 2020 to 2024. Uh, that was done in 2019 and then we had a pandemic. So we anticipate these numbers to be even higher and you can see on the chart that it goes way up, uh, in, uh, Grand Travers County and then Wexford County. Um, and I'm looking at there, I think Emmett are some of the higher numbers that we see based on the need of the study. I also want to just let you know, we work across the income spectrum, so the word affordability is thrown around a lot in housing. Uh, when we talk about Housing North, the work we do is from zero, those making no money and are, you know, potentially homeless, all the way up to those making about 120% of the area median income. Um, and you can see on that chart up there that there are different funding opportunities within each of those buckets and a lot of the, the funding available is for those making 80% or even 60% of the AMI or less, but our communities are often priced out of housing even when they're making, uh, close to the actual area median income. Uh, these are the numbers which you've probably seen. Uh, they show that in Wexford County, about 1,800 housing units were, were needed and most of those were, uh, rental units, but there's also some for sale projections in there. And in Cadillac, of course, the bulk of the need was projected in Cadillac, which is a bigger city, and that showed 938 units were needed. Just briefly, wanted to show this about the different programs we have at Housing North. I won't go over each of them, but a lot of our work, uh, we're doing is to help get our communities what we call housing ready. And within that housing ready program, we also have a few other programs that we've created, including a deed restriction program just for year-round housing. So in the city of Charlevoix, they only have 38% of their residents that live there. They really wanted a program that would ensure there was enough year-round people living in their community and contributing to their community. So we adopted this, uh, deed restriction program after the veil and deed program in Colorado. Links are up there about some of our other ways you can engage, so I won't go into all of them, but we do host a housing summit every October, so I welcome all of you to attend if you haven't already. This year it'll be at the Park Place. So we had some huge success. We've been working since we started, uh, to figure out how we could bring more tools and resources for housing. So in December of 2022, I was fortunate enough to go meet the governor and have four new bills assigned, um, that were, uh, intended to bring more tools to our units of government. They're nothing that you probably haven't heard of before, but really what these tools did is expand, uh, these opportunities to housing specifically. So there, there are four of them that are listed up on the screen and I'm just going to talk about two of them that are expans- expansions of existing tools. One is a neighborhood enterprise zone and the other is a payment in lieu of taxes. So I believe you've used or at least maybe talked about these tools in your community and now they've been expanded, uh, for housing for those making all the way up to 120% of the area median income. On the next slide is just kind of how my brain works to try to explain these tools and the importance of them. Some of them can be used with existing tools, um, such as the Brownfield TIF or Tax Incriminal Financing, and some of them, um, are for mostly multifamily, uh, or those who even have four units or less. So they're not just for developers and for multifamily units. They can be used for those who want to rehab or work on housing or build housing in neighborhoods, um, if these new tools are created. There's a link on our website that goes into the details of these tools as well as the treasury information about each of them. Um, the other thing I wanted to just point out is that the pilot, for example, you know, can't be used with other tools and is really designed for multifamily res- rentals, uh, whereas the other tools, um, you know, can be, other new tools that pass can be combined with other tools like tax incremental financing. And they do allow, um, like I said, some single-family homes, not just multifamily. So we're really excited about these tools. It's a huge milestone, but they're not going to solve the housing crisis. It still means that there's huge gaps in financing, but they're one way to incentivize and bring developers into a community where they might not have come or thought about, um, coming before to meet that community's housing goals. The next thing I just want to mention is land bank authorities, which are a huge tool in our, in our, in our state. Um, and Wexford County is one of the counties that does not have a countywide land bank. Even if you don't have a countywide land bank, you still can use the state land bank as a partner, but I just want to make you aware that we would love to see all that map look purple in our community because we really believe that the, the land bank is a tool that could be used to bring more, not just housing, but development in general to your community. Uh, Mesaki, I believe, uh, formed one in the last couple of years. And these slides just kind of talk a little bit about the process and why we think, you know, this tool could be really important for Wexford County. This is a link to a new tool that came out talking about how housing is economic development and I would also say it's community development too, in a lot of ways, and how communities , uh, can use the land bank, um, as a way to redevelop and, and now for housing. So in the past, land banks were in, brownfield authorities were always thought about just being used for brown, for blighted properties. Now this new tool is being expanded for housing as well. Um, so we wanted to make you aware of it and, um, talk about the different reasons to maybe have a land bank in your community, but also where you can partner with the state land bank, um, who, which is a huge resource. This slide just talks about the ways that you can use this tool just depending on the type of housing market. So it's not just for markets that aren't really great and it's not just for, um, markets that are, you know, have a lot of housing. It's really a tool that can be used for many different reasons. Um, and we, um, know here, I think you have a brownfield redevelopment authority in the city, but you don't necessarily have a countywide brownfield redevelopment authority. So you're doing great in Cadillac, you have a lot of tools, but some of your surrounding townships, you know, communities might want, um, a county land bank to be able to help, um, expand development opportunities just outside the city or in partnership with, with the city. So why should you guys have a land bank? I kind of talked about this a little bit. Um, and this slide kind of shows the process of forming one, um, but I do really think they can help bring more opportunities specifically around housing to Wexford County. They can really help with properties that are underutilized, um, they, their way to transfer property into the land bank in partnership with a developer to then be able to access some of these tools. It's not mandated, it's not required, but it is a really important tool that a lot of our other communities are using. And these are the communities I just wanted to highlight. Um, if you click on each of these links, they go to those county land banks and you can see the properties. So have any of you ever been to Traverse City and seen the Depot neighborhood? Uh, that's an example of a, of a land bank property. So they're, uh, they provide, in that case, a financing tool to acquire the property as well as a loan for the infrastructure and some improvements. So they don't have to be used just for the development of the property, but they can be used to help, uh, incentivize some of those improvements that need to happen for housing to come in. The last thing I want to talk about is the housing ready program. And I should say that we can't do this program or bring this program into communities without all of our community partners and community foundations have really been at the core of bringing this program to each of our communities. And we're currently working with the Cadillac Area Community Foundation and the Mesaki Area Community Foundation to write grants and try to fund, uh, technical support for housing in your community. Um, so I've listed some of the key partners on this. This is a shared capacity model, so what we do is, uh, work to units of government, community members, as well as philanthropy to fund a housing program coordinator that is in your community. And we tend to, um, fundraise for three years to make these position happen, but that doesn't have to be the case, you know, in every community. On this slide, you can see we have housing ready program directors in four of our 10 counties and then we have some contracts for services with, um, contractors that we've are kind of floating and provide support as needed because I can't be everywhere and housing is a huge need right now. Um, so on this slide, we kind of talk about the successes, you know, what does success look like when you're not actually building the houses or putting people in those units? Well, it's tricky to measure that success, but I would say having a dedicated person to focus on all things county, I'm sorry, all things housing have really allowed, for example, Charlevoix County, Emmett County, Lelandot and Manassas to start moving forward that some of their housing goals and start attracting to develop, developers to those sites that will, are what we call housing ready. But you can't just get there without having the zoning, you know, the community behind it and there's a lot of work to do to make our communities housing ready. So what would that mean? What would a housing ready support person do for the city of Cadillac or the greater, you know, Wexford County area? I can't tell you all the answers. This is Zach up there, my new housing ready program director, but it really is somebody who can help build local capacity, help identify key, um, development opportunities, coordinate projects, leverage resources and support those zoning changes for housing, um, not just in the village of Cadillac or the city of Cadillac, but out in the surrounding townships as well. Um, they also track and collect data and help to collaborate with all the different townships and units of government to really bring people together around a common goal, which is to bring more housing to the community for the people that live and work there. So we believe it will take everyone to help make a, a community housing ready. Um, it's hosted by, we host this position, but they are embedded in your community to address your needs and a lot of it is guided by the community's goals for housing. We're not trying to come in and say this is what you should do. We want it to be grassroots and to hear from the community and know how we can coordinate, um, what you need in your community for housing. Um, these are just the steps that I put up there, so it has to happen. We don't come into a community and say you should have this. We want to bring the partners together like AES, who's here, and the Community Foundation and other groups to say, yes, this is what we want, this is how we're going to do it, and then we start to develop the position from there. Um, so I think that's it. I talked fast and a lot, but, um, I wanted to save some time for questions and just let you know that we're here as a resource and support for your community and we're doing our best to bring more resources for housing, uh, to your community. So thank you and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I would just say, um, having participated last Friday in the event that was held out at Baker College, um, the gal that you have up in Emmett County, uh, she's pretty fantastic and, uh, she was on the panel and it was very informative and I really appreciated that opportunity to hear everything that was going on.
Thank you, yeah, I wish we could clone Andrea and put her in, in every community, but yeah, she's, she's great and she's been really doing a lot of good for her community.
The 136,000 is for three years?
Um, I'm not, um, making a request right now for any funding, but we tend to fundraise for, um, about 90 to 100,000 per year, uh, to be able to bring a full-time, you know, position with benefits, but we can, we've also looked at other models in other communities where it's a contracted, you know, position for, for a year at a time. So we're working on that right now, um, expanding it in, um, Charlevoix County. We had a staff change and we're doing a contracted position there, for example. So it's really about what, what the community is looking for. Um, in the counties where we have a full-time person, that's really was their goal. They wanted somebody there for three years to make sure they could see that progress forward and then after three years, that position will either be absorbed by the community, will go for another three years of funding or we'll repla- we'll place them, you know, in another, uh, county.
So I wasn't able to attend on Friday, was, um, were there representatives from the county?
There weren't any county officials.
Because this would be a countywide thing, so we want to...
It would and we are strategizing, uh, getting on the county agenda. I, I spoke once in 2020, but I haven't been, um, back since.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for having me and feel free to reach out if you have any questions.
You're welcome, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along. I appreciate, um, uh, Yaro, your time this evening and council members, as I said, very important issue. Uh, the next item is a request regarding bids and recommendation regarding, uh, utility improvement projects. Uh, we did have a bid opening, uh, received two bids. Uh, this is for the, uh, spot replacement of a fire hydrant as well as over 360 feet of sanitary sewer mains and pavement restoration and street services, uh, street surfaces accordingly. Uh, the recommendation is to go with Salisbury Excavating, Inc., which was the lowest bidder, uh, in the amount of 121, um, $81.90. Uh, with, uh, recommendation, we are requesting a 10% contingency, uh, which would bring up the, the total number tonight to 136,490 dollars and nine cents. Funds are available in the water and sewer fund accordingly.
So is this work in concert with the street work that's being done?
No, uh, I don't...
It's separate?
Yeah, it's separate.
At least one project is kind of in a similar area, so we'll coordinate the, the, uh, Lincoln and Hemlock, I think.
Yeah, I was going to ask to define what it's for, I mean, it, it's...
The replacement of a fire hydrant.
That's an expensive fire.
Well, and all the sanitary sewer mains that go along with it.
Okay.
That are in that area.
That makes me feel a little better.
Yeah.
Yep, three different locations.
Now I feel real good.
What else can I tell you?
Got to be fixed, people.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for utilities improvements to Salisbury Excavating, Inc. in accordance with their bid, plus a 10% contingency for city engineer-approved field changes in unit quantity or scope, bringing the total award to 136,490 dollars and nine cents.
I'll second that.
Good job. I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Final item, Mayor. The city managers' report this evening has to do with our K-9 program here with the city. The K-9 Officer Sage, our, our dog, is 12 years old. And after 10 years of tireless service to the community, is going to be retired, basically at the end of this month. The city is planning on continuing with its K-9 program. And the recommendation this evening is to work with a company that we have worked with in the past called NM K-9 out of Harrison, Michigan. The amount to both acquire the new service animal as well as the training is $11,000. Our K-9 officer, who is currently with Sage, Officer, rather Sergeant, where are you? There you are. Sergeant Taylor is here this evening. We had asked him to attend. He is not retiring from the city, but he is retiring from the K-9 duty. And so Officer Hicks will be participating, assuming that this is approved, will be participating next month in training with the new animal to be taking over those responsibilities accordingly. There are two area, or I should say somewhat area facilities that we receive quotations from. The other one is based out of Flint and was more expensive. It was about $13,500. And so the recommendation this evening is first to waive bidding, and then second would be to approve the $11,000 to work with Northern Michigan K-9. Funds are available in the general fund. And the fiscal year '23 operating budget did include an appropriation of up to $15,000 for this purchase.
I have questions?
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Step up the plate, big guy. So from what I've read, dogs are no longer trained to smell marijuana. You no longer use them for that.
So that is, that is part of the issue that we had with midway through Sage's career, was that he's imprinted on marijuana, okay, which is now, for all intents and purposes, illegal substance, right? So with, with, with that being on the table now, it limits our ability of what we can use the dog for, okay? As for obtaining probable cause to search a vehicle, for instance, if my dog is indicating on illegal substance, I can no longer say this is, you know, that the indication given by my dog is probable cause to search this vehicle. So the new dog will not be imprinted on marijuana, okay? It'll be imprinted on the other illegal drugs, drug substances that'll kind of help us regain that, that tool back.
Do you have dogs that can, is it dual, where they can sniff drugs and bombs?
So it's, it's one or the other is, is how we train these dogs. Part, primary reason, we could, we could train a dog to find both, but my reaction's going to be different depending on what he's indicating on, obviously. So, you know, he, he doesn't give one indication for one and another indication for another substance. It's just when he finds the odor that he's looking for, he or she, they indicate. And that, that's a, that's a trained condition that, that I'm, I'm trained to observe and to know what my dog is, is doing. So yeah, it's, it's, it's one or the other that we typically train them in, just, you know, for those reasons, so.
Obviously, you think that it's necessary.
I do. Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Yep.
We get our money's worth out of it?
I think we do. I think we do.
What kind of breed are you going to go with this?
I'm not real sure yet. It kind of depends on what dogs are available. And, and honestly, I go a lot on the recommendation of the vendor that we're going through based on our city's needs, our department size, departments' needs. There's different personalities in different dogs, just like there is in different people. So we kind of let them know this is kind of the, the guide to what we're looking, looking at and looking for, and kind of trust that they'll, you know, they've got more experience with the particular dogs that they have available, so.
Well, I'll take your word for it. If you think it's necessary...
I sure do. Thanks.
I'll run with that.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Does Sage get to stay with you?
That is the plan, yes. Yep, he'll, he'll come home and get spoiled rotten. And he'll probably drive me bonkers for a little while, you know, so...
But he wants to work?
He wants to work. He is, you know, his, his mind and, and drive is still there. It's just his body is just a little tired, you know, and as I can relate to, so. So, yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else?
Make a motion to waive competitive bidding and authorize the purchase of a new K-9 officer from Northern Michigan K-9 in the amount of $11,000.
Support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I hope we get to meet the new K-9 officer.
Bring him in here to the meeting.
Is it, will there be a retirement breakfast for Sage?
It has been discussed.
Well, maybe.
Biscuits, retirement biscuits?
So I, I know that everyone is hankering to go home. We do have one more item of business this evening under...
Did we just waive the bid, Marcus? I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, okay.
I believe we still need to authorize the purchase.
Oh, still have to be separate? He said the whole thing.
Oh, did he?
Yeah, he did.
I'm wrong.
Yep.
I apologize.
Once.
Sorry for the interruption.
Only time this year.
Usually we do it twice, so I apologize.
But we are going to bring our finance director back, well, not to the podium, but to introduce.
Yep, okay. So this is the budget amendment that we typically do this time, where we look at the, the whole operation and say, where do we need to do some, some cleanup and catch-up and some of these projects that may have come after the budget was approved for the year? And, and this is when we typically look at that. So this one is a little bit more lengthy than, than some. So I'm going to try and just review it in brief, and I know that y'all can read your packets. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, of course. So beginning with the general fund again, revenue is going to come in about $641,000 higher than originally budgeted for, and you can see the detail there from the property taxes. The marijuana revenue includes both some additional revenue. It came in about $53,000 higher than we had budgeted for. And then the state treasury gave us some new guidance on which line item we needed to use for that. So that, this also makes that technical change. But there was some additional revenue. It's hard to predict what, where that's going to come in, so. Constitutional revenue sharing is coming in higher than anticipated in, in property tax administration fee and these other ones as well. I think noteworthy there is North Flight has paid us some additional money based on actual activity. And we've had some challenges with that that we're trying to work through. The interest income environment has been favorable this year with the typically fixed income investments that we're able to own. And so there's some additional interest coming in on there. Sale of property miscellaneous, we talked about insurance settlement for some fire truck damage last year. That actually didn't come in until the current year, so we're recognizing that coming in. And then the big change in contribution from private services is, is in anticipation of receiving the money that right now is at the Community Foundation for the Pickleball Courts. So we anticipate that getting in as well. So that's additional $641,000 in revenue. On the expenditure side now, again, I'm going to move quickly, so if you need to stop me, feel free to do so. The city manager just adjusting the auto allowance to the new contractual amount. The next couple of departments have some salaries and wages increases. Primarily, this is because we've had some fairly significant absences this year for some varying reasons. And there's also, there's some additional compensation paid to those employees that pick up that work. But then also our, our PTO banks are going down, so there's some savings with that. Elections, frankly, elections are costing more, and we're adjusting the budget on an ongoing basis for that. We have more people that we need to bring in. On the city hall side, liability insurance was a little higher, as were utilities. And then the capital outlay, this is just a reappropriation for the roof project that was approved last fiscal year. But the, the bulk of the cost was about $140,000 total. This is the remainder of the cost that, that wasn't incurred or paid until the current year. So these are funds that were appropriated in the past, but we need to, to switch that to this year. In the police department, some overtime based on vacancies, some additional fringe costs. Again, try to budget for what we see, and as we experience some changes throughout the year, as someone may switch from family to single and single to two-person or whatever. Or if we hire a new person that's a family that replaced someone that was a single, those costs change. Some additional supplies. And then capital outlay is for the Tahoe that we're still hoping and expecting to receive. The purchase was approved. Now we just hope to get it, get it on the ground here. This would replace the one that was in the, that's in the budget for next fiscal year, in the proposed budget. So we're just acquiring that one a little sooner as availability allowed. A pretty substantial issue with overtime in the fire department. And we've continued to, to write about this in those quarterly financial updates. A lot of this is related to, some of it's related to vacancy. A lot of it's related to some issues that we're having on an ongoing basis with the North Flight MMR arrangement. So there are lots of discussions happening related to that. Fuel costs, fuel prices are up. And then capital outlay, again, this, back in July, we had presented what was going on with the department's self-contained breathing apparatus. So this appropriates those funds for that emergency purchase that was completed and then reported out back in July. Public works, the next three sections, Parks and Rec, community promotions. Most of that just reflects actual activity of the DPW crew as they spend more time in different departments that will be offset with, with less that gets classified in other areas. So that's primarily what those adjustments are for. And then finally, and there's a correction here that I need to point out for the minutes so that we have this right. Other financing uses, this is to transfer out the funds that we've been talking about to the major and local street funds to pay for upcoming construction projects. So the major street one is correct at 750. The local street one should have been increased by 650, making the amount 710. Would have been the amended budget for that, so the change would have been an increase of 650. So would like the record to show, if approved, that that actually reflects a current budget of 710,000. So that would make the new budget numbers, 8,539,100 for revenues and 10,3,400 in expenditures for the general fund. And again, almost 100% of that negative is related to the funds being transferred out that we've been talking about for the street projects. So that's the general fund. The other ones will go quicker. Major street fund just recognizes that revenue from the transfer in. Local street fund does the same thing. And then based on the timing of projects from last summer for Simon Street, Air Street, some of that trickled in again to the current year. So that's just a reflection of the timing of the construction projects. Water and sewer fund, about $385,000 in additional user charge revenue that's coming in for the year. And so we're going from basically a, a wash on the budget for the year to about an $85,000 surplus, again, which will be reinvested completely back into the, into the fund itself. And again, same thing with like the DPW on these. Most of the salaries and fringes are just a, a transfer of one, one department to another. There was a noteworthy item under industrial surveillance on the laboratory, an increase of about 50,000. That was in conjunction with our IPP program updates. And we had to send a lot of that out for testing as part of those updates. So that's the most noteworthy on that. Everything else is pretty standard as far as the, the work just being classified to different cost centers of the fund. Page seven, the trailhead, again, re-appropriating the final project costs that were already appropriated last budget year into the current year. Nothing, nothing new on that. Consumers Energy Prosperity Grant Fund, this is, this is the $250,000 we received from Consumers Energy. And we did do some projects last year related to the housing, the facade improvements and porches. We did a few of those projects, and we plan to do a few more. That, that program is reopened. So we will incur some costs, and we have related revenue to offset those costs. So that's 100% covered by grant funding. And that activity is about to pick up on some of the other projects related to that as well. So that's in the proposed budget for next year as well. Cadillac Development Fund, another grant that we received from the state of Michigan for the Match on Main. This benefited 100% a local downtown business, so we were, it was just a pass-through grant. So this amendment just recognizes the revenue and the offsetting expenditure for that.
Good. Anybody have questions?
Nope.
This one maybe is not in the blue line either, it looks like. So, yep.
So it's to, the motion would be to approve the...
Adopt the resolution amending the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year '23.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the fiscal budget for year 2023.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Apologize, that wasn't in there. Carrie and I will perfect the agenda process just in time for Sandy to come back, probably.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for our last public comment this evening.
Evening. I think this is the longest council meeting that I've attended. Pastor Troy Baxter and I'm here in Cadillac. Still loving the city. Everything's not the way I want it yet, but I think we're in good company that way. That's why we're here, working on these things. And I appreciate your consistency on working on the issues that we have at hand. The thing I want to speak to this evening is zoning and the city's master zoning plan that is kind of a moving target. Obviously, it is. Things change all the time in funding and whatnot. As we begin to address some of these issues, because of projects that we have on, on the agenda, zoning, as it related to the city's master zoning plan, was supposed to be in place within three to four months, and that was four years ago. And so we've continued to move through the years diplomatically and encouraging, optimistic to get that city's master zoning plan in place, at least as it pertains to four projects and locations in the city. But in, in relation to housing, I've identified 23 acres in the city limits that is suitable for housing and is available and for sale, and we're ready for development. And if we can get the master zoning plan in place, then a lot of these projects will be able to move forward. So that would be the, the focus of my comment tonight is an encouragement that if we need to reach out and get additional manpower to work on this master zoning ordinance, the supports that are needing, needed to be there, then I would ask whoever makes those decisions and has the authority to bring on additional people to work on that, please do, because a lot of the issues we're dealing with with the housing wait on zoning. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. Does anyone have anything this evening?
I, in relation to the comments tonight on short-term rentals, I, as a council member, and I know the others, hear you. Zoning is critical. People move into certain zoning districts with expectations of what that zoning district is going to be. Our one is not a short-term rental district, period. And I think we all understand that. I, I got more calls in the past two weeks on this issue and have forwarded them on to our manager, who has responded to them. But, but I think we want to send the message, zoning does mean something. It's something we intend to enforce, and it's not something we intend to allow people to say, I'm going to do it and ask forgiveness later. It, it's something that's very serious.
And Mayor, council members, just to echo Councilmember King's comments. He's right in regard to the zoning. Our one district is not at all being looked at in terms of a potential future spot of where this type of use would be, would be legalized. Just for, for reference, when council was looking at Planning Commission recommendation a couple of weeks or so ago, that was a recommendation regarding a short-term rental type of use in an office district. And the recommendation was to evolve it from an office district into the business district. I want to say, I think, B3, but regardless, it was still a, a non-residential use type district. And so the city is aware certainly of this issue. There has been correspondence shared with whom we thought was a property owner in the past. We'll obviously pick up the track to see where it's at and look at escalation of enforcement, whether that's citation injunction, combination, you know, thereof, and, and do so accordingly with, with anyone that, that is currently in violation.
So can we talk about that just for a moment? You know, like when I had the conversation with Brian, which is probably almost two weeks ago now, you know, I contacted you, and obviously that person is still renting the home.
But until we hear that that's happening, you know, we don't have a way of monitoring whether they're being compliant or not unless a complaint comes in. And so now we certainly know that it's non-compliant.
So you're monitoring and waiting to catch somebody?
I'm sorry, what, what's the question?
Oh, you were just saying, you know, once, we, we can't, we can't do anything about it until we know. And, and like you said, now, now that we're aware of it, we monitor and wait to...
Well, so when we're, when we're first made aware, we send a letter and we try to get voluntary compliance. If violation continues to occur, that's when we can ratchet it up. And my understanding is that we've had voluntary compliance with a lot of folks that we've sent letters out to in the past. Apparently, in this location, it's not the case. And certainly, we're well aware now. So I've been communicating with police and other staff members, yet even tonight, to try to see where we're at and how we can move it forward, so.
So again, I would go back to, you know, you can go out and you can look at Cadillac VRBO, and you can see who's renting their properties, and you can see...
this issue coming up, is people coming in with specific locations. Uh, we know of the one on Sunny Side through the neighbors that have had, uh, problems there. We know of another one that I've sent, uh, information to the manager on, and I think now that we know those, and, and I would say, and I, I look to my other councilmembers, we would seek to have everyone enforced upon uniformly, but that it's followed and it's followed up with quickly, because I think th- these are what tear communities apart. And the areas we're seeing, the VRBO and the Airbnb are areas that they're strictly prohibited, period. There, there's no gray here.
And there's more of them on Sunny Side.
And what, what would be very helpful is for, um, whether folks want to call us or email us, um, the best way is to call the general number, which is 231-775-0181, and then ask for the Community Development Department. That's where the zoning office is in, uh, and that's where we will, that's where all of the process of, of us following up will start. So getting a list of, of those addresses, those complaints, that's, that's sort of the first, the first step, so.
Right, and it was interesting tonight when Yaro was talking about Charlevoix. Only 38% of the homes in Charlevoix are Iran resident. Yeah, that's scary.
Every town's different.
Right, yeah, yeah, but, yeah, it was just interesting to hear that. Um, even last, last week when we were at that, you know, the lady from Mackinac Island, same, same. So we don't, we don't want to turn into that community.
I hope we find something with some teeth in the enforcement, because obviously what we're doing now isn't working.
At least with this one location.
Right, which is, but still threatening fines when you've got somebody like, that's renting the place on East Nelson from what I've been told for 2,600 a night, you know, a threat of a hundred dollar fine, $500 fine.
Are you talking about the one on Pine Street?
Pine Street, yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, and that's not going to do anything. What will do something if you go turn their water off. If you don't listen to us and you've been warned, look at you, you don't want to, you don't want to.
I don't know if that would be legal.
Is that too harsh, people?
And that's the city attorney.
Can we do that?
It would not be my first course of action.
Of course not, of course not, but it is a course of action.
I, I do think, councilmember, that, that if someone's not listening, we do have the ability as a city to authorize our city attorney to take legal action in the court regarding a possible injunction against that.
Too bad, I'd like to shut their water off.
Which, which can't, well, it can be as harsh as turning the water off.
I'd like to. I'd go over there myself.
He is turning his spigot on.
Please, please don't.
Yes.
Give me the key, I know where they are.
No.
That is not in your job description.
Oh, all right. It wasn't before either.
And then, uh, with the Airbnb issue and like, um, Troy said with the, um, zoning, we're still on, like, what's our schedule? I know two weeks ago, we gave an update on the master plan. We told people that's going to happen, like, you know, we have been hearing about it for a while, but that's going to happen this spring. Um, do we have a planning commission? Is that going to start in the planning commission? How, where's that presentation going to be made for the first time?
So, uh, I have, I have asked that we actually start it outside of the formal public hearing process by having essentially community meet and greets come in, take a look at the draft, uh, look at the pictures that we're, that's what we're waiting for, is to get all the graphics implemented in the, in the draft before we hit the street with it. Uh, that way, we're adding, um, a little bit more time to it, but at the same time, we're giving it more opportunity to get out there to the public before it just goes straight into the public hearing process. Uh, once that happens, you know, for the lack of a better way of describing it, it is somewhat of a streamlined process from a timing perspective, you know, it'll go to the planning commission and unless they choose to draw it out over the course of more than one meeting, it'll be, uh, a public hearing at the planning commission level and then a recommendation to city council. City council will then have it, uh, minimally for two meetings. One of those will be your public hearing meeting, uh, and then ultimately you can decide whether or not, you being council, whether or not to approve it, amend it, remand it, stretch it out, you know, it really, it really all depends on, on your level of comfort. And so our desire is to try to make the legislative bodies as comfortable as possible when you are discussing it and considering it and, and not perhaps necessarily stretching it out any longer, but we figured that we would do that extra work in the beginning by having a couple of, you know, one or two public forum dates out there. I don't have those dates yet, but I would expect that they'd happen sometime later yet this spring, um, you know, early summer, so it's just a matter of getting, getting the document ready for people to, to consume it, and it's, it's just not, not quite there. I don't want to, don't want to rush it, so.
Yeah, it's not the kind of thing you want to rush.
You're done right.
You've got to be, you've got to be really careful.
But we're good there, councilmember.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I have one other thing completely unrelated, and thank you, everybody, for approving the banner and the street closure for Earth Day and just to invite everyone in the community to come down on Sunday. It's from 1:00 to 4:00, um, at the market in Cadillac Commons and in the park. We're hoping for good weather, but dressed for the weather, we will be there, even if it's a day like today. Um, there will be many exhibitors. The first 175 children who come will get a free tree to take home and plant and lots of, lots of good information and things to take home, so come join us to, there'll be...
Music?
Yes, there will be music. We're do, uh, we're also working with Jam &amp; Brad, so there will be some young people. It'll be like an open mic style music, so it should be a really fun day.
Thank you. Okay, off to Lansing.
Drive safely.
All right, well, go ahead, Newt.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody.